All right, so we're gonna get this thing going. And so, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting of May 25th, 2021. And the, uh, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such as an in-person meeting of the city council is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation and the public may have, may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future meetings will be by rule call vote. So if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to speak, to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications in the public hearing to be recognized to speak. All right, so I am gonna start in my upper left-hand corner and work my bottom, down to my bottom right, so in no particular order. In attendance this evening, we have Councilor Peck, we have myself, Councilor LeBlanc, we have Councilor Memhard, we have Councilor Gilman, we have our city clerk, Duan Cinos, we have our Councilor Cox, um, we have Councilor McCarthy, we have Councilor Holmgren, and we have Councilor O'Hara. Also in attendance tonight, we have our acting C A O Frank Cousins, we have our assistant to the C A O Christopher Sicarenza, we have our mayor, Sepatia Taken, we have our H R director, Harley Doug Willow, we have our G P W director, Mark Cole, we have our police chief, Ed Conley, and we have our CFO, John Dunn, and we have our fire chief, Phil Harvey. All right, um, I don't think I missed anybody. All right, so, uh, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is oral communications.
Okay, so during oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard on the oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same and a copy shall be forged to the city council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow any complaints as to individual performance. All right, so, uh, was there anybody that would like to speak on the oral communications? We have, uh, we have Patty, Patty, can you hear me?
Hi, Steve, yes, am I in?
Yeah, yeah, you're in, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Patty Page, 3 Title Cove Way.
Thank you, Patty, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, thank the administration that they included a budgetary item for the, um, continuation of Zoom calls and, um, access. I'd like to follow up on that a little bit, because today, um, Charlie Baker made an announcement that he's seeking extensions beyond the June 25th, 15, um, date to allow remote public meetings to continue, um, at least until he's looking at maybe June 2022. So there, there's some, uh, governor's backing there, and the Mass, um, Municipal Association came out with a really strong statement about remote participation, and they said that it has engaged more residents than ever before and have significantly increased transparency and insight into government operations and decision-making. Remote meetings and remote public participation should be made permanent, and this action should be expedited as a top legislative priority. Now, I, I know I did speak about this, um, neither of those statements included the ADA accommodation, which I was really strongly in favor of. Um, and I did watch the budgetary, um, the budget meeting that included this, and some of the, um, narrative there, I want to just clarify, I'd like to make sure that when Zoom's included, that it includes remote participation, not just, um, you know, viewing. If, if we don't have remote participation, then you, you know, you're really excluding those people with, you know, uh, under the Disabilities Act and for other reasons. It could be childcare issues, there could be, you know, scheduling issues, anything. Um, and it shouldn't, it should not be restricted to just the Cairo Auditorium meetings, which do include Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Those are, you know, really important meetings, that, they have a lot to, you know, they, they have a lot of influence over our lives. But I'd like to see, you know, my personal one would be Waterways, Border Health, the, um, the, the Rights Commission, the Disability Rights Commission, that certainly should be on the list of things that can be remotely participated in and viewed. E D I C Fisheries Commission, Harbor Planning, Z B A, there, there, there's lots of them. So I didn't really want this to be, uh, you know, looked at just city council and city council subcommittees, but this should, you know, that, that's really the low-hanging fruit, not that you guys, no, I didn't mean it that way, but it, it's easy because it's in the Cairo Auditorium and, and, you know, the access is, you know, uh, that young man, and I'm sorry, his name escapes me, was gonna look into all that with the, um, 1623, you know, that accessibility is there, so that's the low-hanging fruit for that auditorium, but the other rooms should somehow be made with accommodations. There's, you know, we, we've proven we can do this remotely, we all have access, uh, most of us now, certainly municipal, um, boards and commissions do. So I, I'd just like to really strongly support that and see where we can bring that in the narrative. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and, uh, the city council will be discussing this on June 8th, whether we're gonna go live, um, or whether we're gonna go keep continuing the, uh, remote meetings, um, or maybe possibly, they may go hand in hand. We're gonna, we're gonna, um, we're gonna have the discussion on the first meeting of June at the council level, so stay tuned.
Well, yeah, it is, um, it's a high-grade model we're looking at, so thank.
All right, Patty, thank you, appreciate it. All right, and also, we've had our health director, um, public health director Karen Carroll has jumped on with us, um, our city, um, planning director Greg Catamatory, and our, um, city auditor Kenny Costa has also joined the meeting this evening. All right, uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak on the oral communications? If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button to, uh, to request to speak. So use either of these two options for oral communications or the public hearing. Is there anybody else for oral communications this evening? All right, seeing none, um, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business?
Next order of business is a presentation from Karen Carroll, Public Health Director, regarding COVID-19 update and the lifted restrictions effective May 29th, 2021.
All right, Karen, what are you doing? Welcome to the, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor LeBlanc, and to the other counselors, thanks for having me and for being patient, patient while I recovered from some surgery, so good to be back. Um, and I have some kind of positive news tonight, so I'm happy about that, and I hope that I can quickly go through sort of where we're at with COVID, um, where we're at with vaccinations, and then some of the changes coming through from the governor and the state, and how they all fit together to help us make decisions and move forward through the summer. Um, so, starting with where we're at, the statewide and local trends for COVID infections are all moving in a very positive direction over the last month or two. So the positivity rate for the state as well as locally is below 1%. Uh, we see a significant decline in hospitalizations and actually zero locally here for Gloucester residents. Uh, but there's been a steady decline in the number of new cases, both statewide and again locally, so we had 188 in Massachusetts two days ago, and only four here in Gloucester. I think we had one new one today, so very low numbers, we're really happy to see that. Virtually no cases or contacts in our schools, the wastewater virus is decreasing weekly to now very low levels of detection in the city, and no detection of the variants of concern anymore. So there was a couple of weeks, as you know, where we were detecting some of the newer variants of concern. So we are now below the level of detection for that one and have been for several weeks, so all good news. Um, so that story that shows a lot of low community-wide transmission, coupled with the next story about very high vaccination rates, together those two things should give people a lot of comfort and reassurance with moving forward and Baker's changes coming on Saturday. So let's go through the vaccination data, and again, this is as of May 20th, that's the most recent data we have last Thursday from the state, uh, and I think it's, you know, it increases significantly each week, so I'm sure it has again this week. Um, the, we, we've been running weekly clinics in the city since January for first responders regionally, and, uh, then seniors, homebound, as many of you know. We've also partnered more recently with the Gloucester Family Health Center, who has made a commitment to an ongoing supply of vaccine, which we hope to be able to just offer this ongoing. Um, as the vaccine moves to more local outlets, we think this is a good thing. The mass sites are starting to close down, as you know, um, and the governor has made a commitment, which we think is really important, to smaller, local, convenient opportunities to get vaccinated. And that's a big cause of hesitancy, we know that, and it's a big barrier to getting vaccine if you have to travel, if you have to miss work, if you have to pull your kid out of school. So we're really excited, um, with this ongoing partnership with the Family Health Center, um, and more recently with Curative, who is the mass vaccination, the vendor that runs the mass vaccination sites in the state. So Curative worked with us earlier in the spring to develop a mobile model that we could use once it, they were able to do that, and once the state approved it, which they have. So earlier this week, we were able to bring Curative onsite to our schools to offer vaccinations for 12 to 17-year-olds for Pfizer, um, onsite, which was great, and I think we had about 170 takers. So again, really important, many of these kids need the vaccine to go to camp, to go to college, um, some of them even for jobs. So, um, we're pleased with those partnerships, we've also been able to do some smaller pilot clinics in the community, such as down at the Harbor Masters office last week for a Coast Guard training. So these are the kinds of things that we anticipate we will continue doing, small, targeted outreach to various groups who need the vaccine and who may have barriers to getting it. We have seen a significant decrease in our registration numbers and turnout for our vaccines for the clinics, and again, that is not unique to Gloucester, that's happening statewide, um, probably nationwide. Um, so again, the percentage of the total population vaccinated for Massachusetts as of last Thursday, we were at 61% of our total population, including children, were vaccinated with at least the first dose. So I know there's other percentage that have been thrown out more recently, more like the 70%, and I'm not sure exactly what they include, but as of last Thursday, it's 61% of the population of Massachusetts is vaccinated, and Gloucester is sitting at 67% of its population vaccinated with the first dose. So again, we are doing really well there, um, and that's great. And the other thing we're really pleased about is that our two age groups over 65 years of age in Gloucester are up around 90% vaccinated, and those, as you know, are the really important, the most vulnerable, highest-risk group. So we're really thrilled to see our 65-year-olds and older getting vaccinated at very high rates. The vaccine inequity that we see in Massachusetts is mirrored somewhat in Gloucester as well, and this is where, again, we're really targeting our efforts to ensure equity of access and, um, education outreach, all of those things. So where we're seeing in the data locally, um, discrepancies is between men and women, so we're seeing women get vaccinated about 10% more than men. Um, and we're seeing it by race, so we're seeing our Hispanic population is being vaccinated in the low 40%, whereas our white population is around 64%. So these are things that we're concerned about, we're watching, and we're trying to really have targeted strategies and partnerships with people in the community, businesses, housing authority, um, wherever we can to address the inequity issues. So again, the two things together, the low community-wide transmission coupled with very high vaccination rates does not leave anywhere for the virus to go, or very little spots for the virus to move around the community. So it's kind of like flu, there is flu, uh, but it's not abundant here, there's not a lot of it, and there's not a lot of ability for it to move around at the moment. So, and that again is a statewide picture, and it's part of why the state has responded the way it has and is opening up more widely on Saturday, which, um, I think is a good thing and, and is timely and appropriate. So looking ahead, uh, we talked about the downsizing of the mass vaccination sites, we're seeing an increase in local supply and local opportunities, there are partnerships between, um, communities to have clinics onsite, to run clinics together, there are partnerships with C V S, private entities like Curative, so we imagine those will continue, and then a lot more mobile opportunities as well. Um, we expect there'll be a booster, or, um, at least a booster and probably an annual vaccine coming. We don't have a lot of information on this, um, at this point, there is a Moderna booster, there's sort of two, two ways they're going with their booster that they're developing and hoping in the coming weeks that they can take to the next step, so it might be ready for fall, but again, we have nothing definitive there, and we don't know about the other companies. Uh, we also don't know whether you'll be able to get a Moderna booster if you had a Pfizer shot initially, so these are all the questions, um, that we'll have to figure out as we go, and we anticipate that COVID vaccinations will be an ongoing thing annually or biannually, whatever they decide, for, um, some time to come. Um, the other issue to remember always is that there are new variants of concern that are moving around, we had some in this area, um, and certainly worldwide, there are variants of concern, you know, the virus mutates relatively easily, and we also know that only about 22% of the global population has been vaccinated as of now. So although we're doing great locally, we live in a global world, people go to Europe over the summer, people travel, um, and the virus will too. So these are things we'll watch moving forward. To date, we've seen good protection from the vaccines we have against the variants that we've seen, um, in the states, so that's a good thing. You may still get COVID, but you might not get it as bad as you would have without the vaccine. Um, but again, things we'll have to watch as we move forward. So what's happening on the state level, as of May 18th, so that was last week, the governor lifted the mask mandate for K through 12 camps and athletics outdoors, um, as well as spectators, coaches, if they can maintain the social distance. I think that was a great step, um, kids are at very low risk, and we've known there's very little transmission outdoors to begin with, with this age group, so they were free to take their masks off at recess last week. Um, as of May 29th, the governor is going to lift all COVID restrictions, except for some cleaning protocols that you can reference on CDC website, those will be encouraged for people to continue. Um, so basically, we're looking at going back to pre-COVID times, except for a few exceptions, which I will go through in a minute, but there will be no more sector-specific guidance that will be given around capacity, logging of customers or patrons, um, face mat, face coverings, all of those things. So businesses can and will likely look like they did prior to, um, COVID a year and a half ago. So the, there are a few exceptions, and I'll go through those, um, there are some settings in which face coverings will still be required, and those are public and private transportation, including Uber, Lyft, all of those, um, as well as train stations, bus stops, depots, any kind of transportation hub. Inside K through 12 public schools or other licensed schools by the state, inside childcare programs, inside healthcare facilities and providers, that will include P Ts, OTs, dentists, any kind of healthcare provider, uh, congregate care settings, so again, communal living homeless shelters, um, domestic violence shelters, places in which there, there is a perceived higher risk, a population at higher risk, will still be required to wear face coverings inside and healthcare rehab day services and programs. Um, at the point in which the, the order number 67 is lifted, the governor's order for face coverings on Saturday, which is May 29th, um, there will be an advisory put in place and adopted in its place, and the advisory is based on the CDC's recommendations that if you are not fully vaccinated, for your own safety, you should continue to wear a face covering and maintain social distancing. Again, this is an advisory, it's not an order. If you are vaccinated, you can resume on May 29th all activities without maintaining the six feet, regardless of indoor or out, and without a mask. Um, to note that businesses and organizations, agencies can set their own policies for their staff and for their patrons, but they need to keep in mind the following, that anyone, that there are exemptions all along to the face covering rule, so anyone under five years of age does not need to wear a face covering, and any persons for whom a face mask creates a health risk, and there are four criteria for that health risk. So we just caution that if business and agencies want to go beyond the advisory and have a policy about this, you need to be very mindful of the exceptions to the face covering rule. Um, there is also a regional standardized campaign that we're working with a coalition from the North Shore, um, and M A P C funded an effort to standardize the message. We're low, working with Ken Reel and Elizabeth in our, with our tourism groups, Chamber of Commerce, to try to have a standard sign or language throughout the community for businesses, and, um, the campaign that the North Shore is adopting is a very simple round blue circle that says masked or vaxxed, and then the date of the governor's change in order. So, um, they can adopt that or not, businesses can do what they want with that signage and that campaign, um, and then finally, as of June 15th, the governor is rescinding the emergency order for COVID, and as I'm sure you've already discussed or will, there is a couple of legislative fixes that were filed, I think, today to address things like quorums for open meeting law, as well as liquor licenses and special permits that cities will be allowed to extend. So those are my updates, I think in general, the picture is really positive, um, I thank you all for your support, and again, we have tremendous partners within the community who have hung in there with our COVID task force and, um, helped us to reach so many people and take care of so many people through this whole thing. Um, again, you know, it's a relatively positive scenario right now, I feel optimistic that we're gonna have a good summer, um, normal months that, where people largely resume normal activities and are very safe, and hopefully next year will go the same. Thank you.
Great, Karen, I appreciate that. So I just want to commend you on you and your staff, on everything you've done over the past year and several months, um, to keep us posted, to keep the city staff posted, to keep the council posted, and the residents. So do we have any counselor questions for Karen this evening? Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Karen, thank you so much. My question is, do we have any strategies for how we can increase the Hispanic population in terms of getting, um, the vaccinations, because 40% seems pretty low compared to the rest of the population, so just interested to know, um, what we might be able to do to get that number up?
Yeah, it's a very good question, um, this last, you know, getting this last sort of 30% of our overall population and then higher in certain populations is the hard, is the hard yards, um, it's a lot of education, it's a lot of outreach, it's a lot of making sure that information is available in multiple languages, it's understanding who the trusted messengers are in different communities, um, who people listen to, we've been partnering closely with providers, G Ps, um, and for this particular population, it's a number of efforts underway of targeting businesses, um, community centers, churches, that kind of thing, and making sure that the information is accessible, available in all languages. So there is not any one strategy, it's a lot of, um, outreach to all our partner agencies and really asking for their assistance as well. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Belle, any other counselor questions? Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Karen, to follow up on Counselor Gilman's question, uh, I'm wondering if the Health Department has partnered with Gloucester Public Schools, uh, because I know they have a lot of, um, ESL children who are Latina, um, in the school system, and, uh, as well, is there anything the Human Rights Commission can do to help?
Um, great question, yes, we've definitely partnered with the schools, we partner with them all the time, all of the vaccine information went out in multiple languages, there were opportunities for questions, um, and they have lots of networks established to help communicate to parents, answer questions parents have, address concerns, any of the children that got vaccinated had to have parental consent, so that process is never easy, and they have it down to a science and, and do it really well. They've partnered with our nursing team to make sure that they get the information they need, and the, the, um, school nurses are on board. Um, and then the convenience thing, I mean, we, we again found for our school population for testing that, that vaccine, that getting to test sites was, can be a barrier for a lot of families. So again, it's just an important part of having the vaccine available locally and having it easy to remove those barriers. Um, we, as I said, we're partnering with this regional coalition that's addressing all of the same issues, developing some tools, um, as well as we have a, a partnership, we have a contract with the Guilfoyle team, who's been fantastic, and they do a lot of our materials for outreach, um, the blog, the graphics, um, and they've recently done a series of interviews with trusted members of the community, and that's not quite ready to go primetime, but they're working on it, and I don't know exactly who the team interviewed, but they have spent many hours talking with people about why they got their vaccine and, and sort of addressing some of the questions and concerns that people have. So you can watch for that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jen, any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, once again, Karen, kudos to your team, um, you guys have done an outstanding job with this pandemic, and, uh, hopefully, we never have to see this again in our lifetime, cross your fingers. All right, if there's anything else to, um, for us, just let us, send us an email, let us know, and we'll, and we'll make sure we disperse the information properly.
Great, thank you, Councilor LeBlanc.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the confirmation.
All right, um, so before we do this, uh, Councilor Nolan isn't with us this evening, and we also have had our, um, Community Development Director Jill Cahill has joined the meeting this evening. Okay, so I will read the motions for Ordinance Administration, and first up, we have Daniel Epstein, and I'm just gonna bring Daniel in. Daniel, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Great, we're gonna get going with you. Uh, so Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Daniel J. Epstein to the Board of Registers, term to expire to 14/24, an ISO move.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Counselor LeBlanc, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Um, any counselor discussion? Counselor Holmgren?
I can vouch personally for Dan's, uh, passion for the community, in the short time he's been here, he's coordinated cleanups in Ward 2, and I'm excited, he's volunteering this time out of his busy life, uh, as all of our volunteers do to make the city, uh, go, and, uh, and, uh...
Thank you, Jen, I think, was it, was it just me, or did everybody else lose Jen a little bit? Yeah, all right, we lost you a little bit, you were a little bit, uh, Mr. Roboto.
Sorry, two thumbs up, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, we got the gist of it, thanks, Jen. Um, anybody, any other counselor, uh, discussion? All right, uh, Dan, I'm gonna, uh, yes vote, you are impressive, uh, your Ordinance Administration interview. Yes, vote. You are impressive at your Ordinance Administration interview and. If you need anything, definitely reach out to the council or the mayor's office for any guidance for the Board of Registers.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we have a motion and we have a motion and we have a second. I will do the roll call. Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Pat?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
And Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Alright, Dan, thanks. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to serve.
Thank you. Alright, up next, we have. Augie Xavier. Augie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Welcome to the welcome to the meeting this evening. So Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council appoint Auguste Xavier Junior. For filling an unexpired term of the City Own Cemetery Advisory Committee, term to expire two fourteen twenty two and ISO move.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councillor LeBlanc, seconded by Councillor O'Hara. Any councillor discussion? Alright, I will I will. Endorse Augie. He owns the funeral home downtown. He did a tremendous job at my father's service. Before this pre-COVID thing and. He was born and raised in the in the in the business and I think he's going to be excellent on the. The City Own Cemetery Advisory Committee, so I'm definitely voting for you tonight, Augie.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, so I will offer the roll call. Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Pat?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Alright, Augie, thanks again for being here this evening. If you need anything, definitely reach out to any of us or the mayor's office.
Thank you very much.
Alright, have a good night. Alright, and up next, we have Bill Cuff. Hey, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Welcome to the meeting this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, councillors.
Okay, so Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Bill Cuff. Fulfilling an unexpired term to the Community Preservation Committee, term to expire two fourteen twenty two and ISO move.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councillor LeBlanc, seconded by Councillor O'Hara. Any any councillor discussion? Okay, so Bill, it was very impressive at your Ordinance Administration interview and I am definitely appointing. It's a yes for me this evening.
Thank you.
Alright, so motion's been made and seconded. I will call for the roll call. Councillor LeBlanc, yes. Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor Memard? We got Scott. Did we lose him? I think we lost Scott. Alright. Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Pat?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
And Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
Alright, we do have a quorum of the council majority, so motion passes on a roll call vote of. Seven in favor, one absent and one technical difficulty. Scott's back, thank you.
He just gave a thumbs up.
Yeah, we passed it. I don't know how long how long he was during during this, so it passed. So Bill, Bill, thank you and if you need anything.
My 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 support in principle.
There you go. Alright.
Alright.
If you need anything, reach out to the council or the mayor's office and we'd be happy to guide you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Alright, Bill, thanks again. Alright, I think that's it for the for the appointments. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Alright, are there any councillors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Councillor Cox? Anybody else?
Order. Councillor orders number one.
Hey, I was gonna remove it too. From my order.
Sorry.
It says I was gonna remove it also for a discussion real quick. Do you wanna do you wanna speak before I do? You you removed it before me.
Augie, you're the maker of the order.
Okay, hold on one second. Alright, so I'm gonna, I don't want to remove the order, but I want to kind of clarify why it's on. The agenda this evening. So on May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, the governor. Governor Charlie Baker announced that lifting the COVID-related restrictions. And in the expected date for the end of the Commonwealth State of Emergency, the details of. Hold on one second, I'm sorry, my dog's so crazy. So beginning Saturday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, all COVID-related restrictions. Or licenses are lifted and all licenses can resume normal operations. The governor's COVID nineteen state of emergency will end Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And the state of emergency brings with two important changes. And patios, outdoor expansions, licenses that have been approved for expansion of patio and outdoor services. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders may continue their outdoor operations for sixty days. After the end of the state of emergency, which is Sunday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And the reason I brought it to Ordinance Administration is just so we can keep it in the loop, just in case we want to pursue something. So it's it's in there for an earmark, so I wanted to try to stay ahead of the curve before we got behind the eight ball. Councillor Cox, would you like to add anything to that because you wanted to remove it also?
I I personally, I think it's premature to put this forward, especially in light of what the governor put forward today. It would be. I mean, we're already, we have the protection for open meeting law to September first, even without that. And then also to August fifteenth for the license. And the way that it's worded on the order, that you're only discussing the seasonal liquor license. And it's not, it's not seasonal liquor license. The overall encompassing legislation is. The open meeting law and special permits for outside dining. It really actually does not have anything to do with the seasonal liquor licenses. But the special permits and the ability to serve alcohol outside of the premise. So the the language in the order is misleading and not encompassing. All of the legislation, so. I I just, especially based on his announcement today, I think it's premature and not. Not complete.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna leave it on there for discussion O and A and then if I gotta remove it at O and A, we'll take it off then, but. I just wanted I just wanted to put an earmark out there just so we try to stay ahead of this just a little bit before. I didn't realize he was gonna have an update on things this evening. I talked to our General Counsel last, General Counsel last week. And this was brought to my attention and that's why I put this in last week, so. But we'll we'll leave it on there. I completely understand and. We're gonna keep it in the queue for as long as we need to and have a discussion on on Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
Not next Monday, but.
Are you gonna keep the conversation to strictly the seasonal liquor licenses, which have nothing to do with the governor's? Release of state of emergency. I'm just not, based on the wording, it's not.
Yeah, well, it's it it kind of opens it up a little bit more than just that, so we'll have the discussion. We'll figure it out and then if we need more moving parts to it, we'll revise the order and we'll move forward with that, but.
Okay, as written, technically, you're only allowed to speak about seasonal liquor licenses, so at O and A.
Alright, so this was this was for informational only. This wasn't anything that was removed and amended. Is there anybody else that would like to? Remove anything from the council consent agenda? Alright, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the. Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Consulor Memard, seconded by Consulor Holmgren. Alright, I will offer the roll call. Consulor LeBlanc, yes. Consulor McCarthy?
Yes.
Also Memard?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Pat?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
And Councillor Holmgren?
Yes.
And motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order of business is the Budget and Finance Committee Report of May twentieth.
Alright, Councillor Cox?
I present to you a consent agenda. If anybody would like to pull anything from that, please do so now. Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councillor Cox, seconded by Consulor Memard. Any discussion, Councillor Cox?
I'm just some more grants, some changes, some routine business. Pretty easy.
Okay. Alright, so everybody understand the consent agenda that's before us this evening. Alright, I will call for the roll. Consulor LeBlanc, yes. Consulor McCarthy?
Yes.
Consulor Memard?
Yes.
Consulor O'Hara?
Yes.
Consulor Pat?
Yes.
Consulor Cox?
Yes.
Consulor Gilman?
Yes.
And Consulor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes for the to accept the unanimous consent agenda for budget and finance on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Standing Committee Report of.
I'm sorry, Consul, go ahead.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the disposition by means of a lease as provided in lease agreement. Two one one four seven for the Witham Street area at ninety nine Thatcher Road between the City of Gloucester. And the Good Harbor Beach Incorporated pursuant to the terms and conditions stated therein, said term. Is to be three years from May first, twenty twenty one to April thirtieth, twenty twenty four and ISO move.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councillor Cox, seconded by Consulor Memard. Any discussion?
I need to amend this. At Budget and Finance, we didn't set the rate. Which has also been the past practice that we didn't set the rate, so I'm not exactly sure how it got set. Three years ago, but the range that was recommended to us from the assessor's office. Was from seventy two hundred dollars to seventy five hundred dollars. Based on that information and what we know about. The world that we're currently in, I would like to recommend and make an amendment to the motion. That we keep the rate at seventy two hundred dollars, which is on the low end of the scale and the reason for that is. That I think we need to be as business friendly as we can to our community. And by keeping it on the low end of the scale and we're not. We're not losing money. You know, it's an increase from last year of six or the previous. Term of sixty seven hundred dollars, but it is in line with what we would get for income.
Thank you, Councillor Cox.
So I.
There you go.
I would like to amend the previous motion to add the seventy two hundred dollars as the rate.
Second.
You're right.
Second.
Moved by councillor. Amendment has been moved by Councillor Cox, seconded by Consulor Memard. Alright, so any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Pat?
Just supportive, Councillor Cox's thought process of supporting our businesses. Says trying to get back on their feet, et cetera. The dollar difference is very small. And I think it's a good gesture going forward now.
Right, thank you, Barry. Any other councillor discussion? Alright, seeing none, I will call for the roll call on the amendment only. Consulor LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memard?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara? Nope, you're on mute, Jamie.
Yes.
There you go. Councillor Pat?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
And Consulor Holmgren?
Yes.
Alright, amendment passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. So back to the main motion with the amendment. Any other, any other discussion?
No, I, this standard operating procedure for every three years.
Yep, okay, so.
Actually, I'm gonna let John at Consul McCarthy take this one. It was his request, so go ahead, John.
Consul McCarthy?
Yeah, just one thing that we added. Mr. Dyer agreed to take down the signs, the toe signs and and. The signs that dictate that it's for the hotel parking in the off season when he's closed, so that would open it up to residents.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor discussion? Alright, seeing none, we will call for the roll call. Consulor LeBlanc, yes. Consul McCarthy?
Yes.
Consul Memard?
Yes.
Consul O'Hara?
Yes.
Consul Pat?
Yes.
Consul Cox?
Yes.
Consul Gilman?
Yes.
And Consul Holmgren?
Yes.
And motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Councillor Cox?
Alright, Budget and Finance recommend unanimously to to recommend that the City Council resolve the following. Result, having conveyed an open meeting on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Prior to the closing date, the City Council of Gloucester, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Statement of interest form dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one for the O'Malley Innovation Middle School located at thirty two Cherry Street. Gloucester, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies. In the prior categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In the future to replace the single pane windows with energy efficient windows to decrease energy related costs. This repair project falls under priority number five, labeled replacement renovation and modernization of school facility. Systems, windows. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commitment. Of the City of Gloucester to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Board Authority and ISO move.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made.
Second.
For Cox, seconded by Consul Gilman and Memard. Alright, any councillor discussion?
So the reason why I didn't put this on the consent agenda is that they are up against the deadline. And we need to vote for a reconsideration this evening, so that is why this was not put on the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you, councillor. Any other councillor discussion? Alright, seeing.
Just something that I said in the B and F meeting. But my son, it was not long ago that he attended O'Malley and for sure, the windows are in desperate need of replacement. And I think whenever we can take advantage of an MSBA reimbursement, it's really in our best interests. We might not get this the first round, it might be a couple, but it puts us on the queue, so I think it's a great idea and appreciate that this is being brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Consul Pat, did you have your hand up?
Yes, just a clarification. I don't know if I misheard, but I believe. Councillor Cox, when she read this motion, the next to the last word she said. She said board instead of building and I just want to make sure we don't have any issue if it's recorded that way, that it shouldn't say. State Massachusetts School Building Authority, that's all. Thank you.
Was everything proper with Barry's question? Okay.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I thought he was asking you a question if you said certain something.
I read it verbatim from what was on here, so I imagine that I said Massachusetts School Building Authority, so. I said it five other times. So I said it five other times in the paragraph, so I'm pretty sure I'm. I'm, I'm not opposed to saying that I might have said it wrong, but after the fifth time.
We're good, we'll be fine.
But I think we're good.
Okay. I'm not.
That's okay, Barry, we got it.
Next time, I'm just gonna waive the reading.
There we go.
Any other Counselor discussion? All right, seeing none, I will offer for the roll, I will call for the roll call. Uh, Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
And Counselor Holmwood.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent.
Counselor.
Yes.
Move to reconsider. Second.
Second.
A motion to reconsider has been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Gilman and Memhard.
Give it to Memhard, we're just happy he's here.
I'm just calling it like I see it, it's all right.
He's on a silly delay.
All right, so, uh, everybody understands the, uh, motion to reconsider. All right, I will do the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, no. Counselor McCarthy, no. Counselor Memhard.
No.
Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pat.
No.
Counselor Gil, uh, Counselor Cox.
Yes, no, God.
What is it, yes or no?
No.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
And Counselor Holmwood.
No.
Uh, motion to reconsider fails on a roll call vote of zero in favor, eight opposed, and one absent. Uh, all right, Counselor Cox, that wraps up our budget and finance.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have our next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the ordinance and administration committee report of May seventeenth.
All right, uh, Counselor Nolan is not with us this minute, so I, well, this evening, so. I will pick it up and, uh, proceed. So ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend. That the city council approve Juneteenth Independence Day as a holiday for city employees, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor LeBlanc, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Um, we do have our human resources director on this evening, so if anybody has any questions about the holiday. Feel free to ask. If not, we will, uh, offer the roll call. Everybody all set? With Counselor, Counselor Cox.
I have a question. Um, I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this because it's more about contracts. But typically, when we add a holiday, it's during contract negotiations, um, and there's some give and take. Is, is that not the case here? We are just giving?
Well, the contract, the personnel ordinance, the AFSA A contract, the AFSA B contract. And the GMAA contract all state that any, um, holiday declared. By the state of Massachusetts become a paid holiday for the city of Gloucester. The question became with the patrolman's contract, the superior's contract, and the fire contract. Their contract read that if the state of Massachusetts and the city council declare a legal holiday. So to avoid any confusion, we wanted to make sure that, um, you, you approved it.
Okay, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, I was just curious of, you know, the timing of it.
Another hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Counselor discussion? All right, seeing none, does everybody understand the motion? All right, I will offer the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara. Right, we'll circle back to Counselor O'Hara, Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmwood.
Yes.
And we have Counselor O'Hara back. Counselor O'Hara on Juneteenth.
Yes.
All right, motion, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Planning Development Standing Committee Report of May nineteenth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Gilman.
I have no items to report, but I did want to remind city councillors and abutters for eleven Webster Street. That on Thursday, May twenty-seventh, we are having three site visits for the height. Special counsel permit under three point one point six B. One is at four thirty, one is at five, and one is five thirty. I ask that you schedule them by emailing me at vgilman. Um, at gloucester dot M A dot gov. Did I say that right? I think so, yes. And, um, I also wanted to, uh, mention that I did walk around and distribute. All of the notices to the abutters and, um, thanks to Counselor Holmwood who interpreted them. Um, in Spanish and Portuguese, and that was a request at our last P and D meeting. So we did it. They were all duly walked around with and, um, and the ones that had to be mailed. Because the landlords do not live on the site, were also mailed on the very morning, earliest mailing out of DLF. So I think we're good and we hope to have, um, city councillors and abutters there. And if there's any additional room, um, we can, are willing to hold up to ten people. So there have been a couple of other people that have called and if we can accommodate them, um, we will. So, and, and also the polls are all marked, so if you want to go by now and take a look. I know, uh, Sean Nolan went by this afternoon to see them. So all the, um, the markers are all there on the polls. And it describes what the different colors represent. And so even if you can't make the site visit, you can go and see the polls. So that really worked out well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, Madam Clerk, uh, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the first public hearing, public hearing twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, rezoning twenty twenty-one dash two. I men Gloucester zoning ordinance, section five point two four accessory in-law dwelling units. And associated definitions in section six de- definitions in accordance with Gloucester zoning ordinance. Section one point eleven point two subsection A.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, councillors.
How are you?
Wow, my hair is kind of sticking up there, isn't it? First time I turn the camera on. Um, good evening, Greg Catamatory, Planning Director. Um, I, if I could share my screen, I'll just give. A brief presentation to these proposed amendments. Um, if you've had the opportunity, um, it's similar to the presentation that was given to the planning board. As well as, uh, the Planning and Development Standing Committee. Um, but, um, you know, I, again, I'll, I'll briefly outline the proposal. Um, also talk a little bit about how it's been, uh, revised through the process. And then entertain any questions of the council, and obviously you'll also hear from the public on this. So I'm just gonna share this presentation. Everybody see that okay? Um, so this is, um, you know, kind of, you, you've probably seen this cover slide in, in several permutations. Judy Barrett from the Barrett Consulting Group, who we've been working with, uh, for the better part of a year and a half, almost two years now. On implementing some of the strategies identified in the housing production plan. You know, we came to the council to kind of outline some of these met proposed measures back in, uh, January of this year. And, uh, then, you know, kind of following through on, on that outline, uh, proposals have been initiated by the planning board. And you referred, um, the accessory dwelling units ordinance out to the planning board for public hearing. They've held that. Um, as well as this has been discussed at the Planning and Development Standing Committee just last week. And so I'll just give you a brief overview. So just to review kind of a little bit of the how we got here, um, some of the housing production plan goals as they apply to this proposed ordinance. Um, examples of accessory dwelling units, you know, um, you shouldn't be surprised, they're actually already in the community now in kind of a different form. Um, and then what we're talking about in terms of, of proposing in this ordinance, how they would be different from what's now termed an in-law of a apartment. And then get into, uh, the planning board recommendation as well as, uh, the P and D recommendation, and then go to public comment questions. Um, so you're, you've, you've heard this several times, you, it's been presented to you, it's kind of been almost, you know, adopted by several boards. As, uh, moving in the direction of, of trying to address the housing needs in Gloucester. Um, way back in, uh, twenty eighteen, we worked with MAPC, um, to really do a deep needs assessment. It was a great snapshot of a lot of, uh, data and, and really informed, you know, where we are as a community in terms of serving the needs related to housing. Um, you know, design some, you know, very structured goals and policies on how to address those needs. And, you know, one of the overarching themes of, of producing a, a, a housing production plan is to deal with. Um, you know, the need for affordable housing, but across the board, we wanted to use that document much. In, in many more ways, um, to really address the supply of housing. So it's not just affordability. Um, it's also the types of housing that the community needs and how to try to address that. Um, some of the highlights from that plan were also related to, you know, what the city of Gloucester looks like and what it may look like. Um, in the near future now, um, the, the population is aging, um, will potentially have as much as, you know. Greater than forty percent of the population over the age of sixty by twenty thirty. Um, it will be very interesting to see the, um, the census come out. Um, I think as we kind of see the American survey, which is kind of a midpoint, it looks like there's been, um, an increase in population. Which is a good thing, um, for a number of reasons. I mean, we don't want to have a dwindling population. We want to have a strong population in the community. To address both, um, the needs of the community from a service perspective, um, but also to, to support everything that we do. Um, and also to have people have the opportunity to stay in the community if they, if they choose to. And that's, that's also what, um, the housing production plan addresses. I won't go into a, a lot about affordability. We've had a lot of discussion about that in terms of, of how the state and the federal government define affordability. In Gloucester and, and what the real local need is. Uh, but in again, in some of the ways as we try to address supply. That may also address affordability. Um, we're probably not gonna all see a, a great drop in, in the real estate market. Unless there are other forces involved, um, but certainly supply is, is one of the goals of the state and also to help address our need. So specifically ADUs, um, can create opportunities to develop a diverse and affordable housing stock to meet the needs of change, a changing demographic. Profile in the city. Again, these are smaller units, they're designed to be rental units, they cannot be, um, sold separately. As, as a condominium or a cooperative unit. And so again, because of their size, the nature of, of them being on. In a, a single family lot where there's somebody living there that has a vested interest in that unit as well. Um, it may, it may address, um, in some ways affordability, again, not as I always turn to my Sean Henry. Planning board member, not big A, but little A affordability in terms of, of greater options and, um, perhaps. Um, more affordable to, to folks in the community. Um, identify sites that are most appropriate to accommodate Gloucester's needed growth and housing. And we are talking about kind of an infill scenario, and we're also talking about structures that may already be in place that could be modified. Um, without too much effort, um, to create units. So again, that's kind of an efficient way to use the existing built environment. Um, minimize the displacement of low, lower income or cost burden households. This is something we've, we've heard a lot about over the last several years. Um, in that, you know, whether it's a, a single person living in a house that used to have a family. Um, that is now dealing with the upkeep of a single family home as well as taxes and, and the expenses of living. Um, and providing an option for, um, a little bit of, of a, a nearest neighbor. If it's a, in an, a, uh, attached ADU or on the lot, as well as potential income. Um, also to promote safe and healthy housing and living. Um, we know that there are some of these structures that exist now. That maybe don't have all the life, uh, health and safety, uh, you know, infrastructure that they need. And so this is a means of, of permitting something that we've certainly heard from a lot of people in the community that they desire to create. Um, but in many cases, or not many cases, but in some cases maybe have created them without the proper permits. And, and the proper, uh, life, health, and safety concerns being addressed. So a little bit of examples of, of what these might look like. Again, there are some in the community already, they're in surrounding communities. And this is a nice little graphic, um, in the center of, of the slide that, um, shows these options might be entirely within a single family home. I really like this one in, in the, uh, the upper left corner because I'm gonna show you an example of exactly almost the same thing. Um, that was recently created as, as an in-law apartment. And really the distinction between the two is, is that, um. It will be available to anyone that might want to rent that unit. Um, and also with, uh, a restriction that it has to be rented for at least thirty days. I'll get more into the ordinance. So again, these could be standalone, um, structures, mostly in, in the rear of properties. Um, they could be, you know, attic apartments, basement apartments, or, um, you know, a side by side, uh, to a single family home. Um, so this is an example of, of, um, a architectural, uh, file that was filed with the building department, I think. Within the last two years, um, this was the existing structure, and you see the lines of, uh, a single family home with a, a garage on the side. Uh, they made a proposal for an in-law apartment that would be above the garage with an access around the rear. And there's the example of it, uh, being built. You, you would not know it if you were driving down the street. That there was actually an accessory dwelling unit in there. Um, and there are other examples in the community. Um, they're not concentrated in any one area, they're kind of spread out. Um, this is another example in West Gloucester. Again, from the street, you would not know that, uh, there's, there's an in-law apartment in that, in that unit. That could, if this ordinance was passed, be then used as an accessory dwelling unit. Um, I think the real kind of, uh, kind of part of the discussion that maybe is taking on a little bit more focus. Is the idea of a, a detached dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit. So this is again, just a rendering. You can envision that there, there may be structures that you've already seen that have dormered garages and that type of thing. That have been created for, uh, bonus rooms or offices, which probably came in pretty handy over the last year. As I ushered my family out of the kitchen to finish up dinner. And, and so those are, those are examples of, of, uh, structures that might be able to be converted. Um, as, as a standalone or detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, again, you know, this is, this is just an example of that type of conversion of a, of a garage into an accessory dwelling unit. Another standalone, not necessarily a garage structure, um, but again, in, in, uh, most likely in a, in kind of a rear yard setting. This looks like it came from the Midwest, a little bit bigger. Satellite dishes, I'm not sure we need those, but. So anyway, so the, the, the proposal itself is, is kind of in three sections of the zoning ordinance. Um, one is the definition of, of an accessory dwelling unit itself in section six. And, um, I have it right here, and this is the version that came out of the Planning and Development Standing Committee. With some revision from the original, uh, definition that was in the proposal. The accessory dwelling unit is a separate dwelling unit with provisions for living, eating, cooking, and sanitation located inside a detached, single-family dwelling. An attached ADU or a detached building located on the same lot as a detached, single-family dwelling. A detached ADU as an accessory and subordinate use to the principal dwelling and held in the same ownership as the principal dwelling. Um, and so I just highlighted in, uh, in yellow, like in an old highlighter. Um, the revision that was, um, uh, added to, to the definition at, uh, the P and D level. Um, there was a desire, you know, through the public process, some, some input to be a little bit more specific. There are dozens of different definitions of accessory dwelling units. Um, I think this is now something that's, uh, much more comprehensive, that deals not only with the use, but a little bit more definition. Um, and parity with, um, the state building code as to what exactly a dwelling unit is. So that's a brand new definition that would just appear in the definition section alphabetically, uh, in section six of the zoning ordinance. And then getting to the actual, um, ordinance itself that would regulate the creation of, of these units. These are the goals that were kind of, uh, collectively identified through the Housing Production Plan Working Group and the Planning Board. And then, um, reiterated through the P and D process to create the opportunity for accessory dwelling units in Gloucester's residential neighborhoods. Increase diverse housing options while respecting the residential character of Gloucester's neighborhoods. Add rental units to Gloucester's housing, encourage a more economic and energy efficient use of the city's housing supply. And provide homeowners with a means of obtaining rental income to defray housing costs. The, the size of proposed units, um, there was actually a fair amount of discussion in some of the last sessions. Of the planning board before this was advanced because as, um, I think I made a brief presentation to the council. Um, there's been a number of changes, um, to forty A, uh, out of the last legislative session. That actually provided a forty A definition of, um, the size and scope of accessory dwelling units. So, um. So these metrics of an accessory dwelling unit shall be a maximum of fifty percent of the habitable floor area of a single-family dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is less. And how that calculation of habitable floor area is directly, has direct parity with the state's definition. It was slightly different in its former drafts, but the decision of the Planning Board was to be consistent with the state's definition in defining how how large an accessory dwelling unit could be. Similarly, for, so that was that was kind of the parameters for a unit that would be within a single-family home or attached to a single-family home. And then there are also parameters for a detached ADU. And again, similar calculation for size, a maximum of nine hundred square feet. So again, these are kind of scaled to the size of a single family on a on a lot. And so where you might have a smaller house on a smaller lot, the accessory dwelling unit also kind of gets scaled a little bit. There are also additional parameters that the Planning Board put in place that these should in a lot of ways kind of match the architecture of what is there. So that, you know, you don't end up with, you know, kind of a box next to a pitched roof or there's there's, again, these are guidelines, so there'll something be reviewed. It's not to be really heavy-handed, but to have some parameters in place to to affect also the design of these structures. And then also having setbacks setbacks and a maximum height allowance. So the height allowance is related to whether or not it meets the accessory building setbacks at twenty feet or twenty-four if it had met the principal building setbacks. And we know that, you know, we may have existing structures that may want to be converted by by a homeowner. And in those instances, when somebody can't comply with the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, they have the ability to apply for a special permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals with with that that standard of not having a detrimental detrimental impact to the neighborhood. I think this is an important distinction in that the this is a use that I that I at least have vicariously heard sitting next to the building inspector in my office and also as folks would come across the counter and also appear in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This would now be an allowed use by right if if it meets the the ordinance and by special permit if if there are areas where it is, it doesn't comply, but that the use is enabled. So that kind of discussion of, you know, I've heard, you know, people say, I'm concerned that this might be a dwelling unit. Even from the inspectional services perspective, you know, they they permit a bonus room, they see a certain amount of plumbing, and there's always kind of this concern. So I'm just here to say very overtly, at least all the discussions that we've had, everyone has said this is a use that we are comfortable with moving forward to create opportunities. And so there'll be no question that's what the purpose of this ordinance is, is to create either units as a part of an existing single-family home or potentially as a detached unit on a single-family home lot. And finally, the third section of the ordinance, other than five twenty-four, which would be the replacement of the in-law ordinance with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is in table two point three point seven, accessory uses number twenty. That's where the current ordinance identifies accessory in-law apartments. And that 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 line item would be replaced with accessory dwelling units. And also have in parentheses, C section five twenty-four, so it points anyone that's interested in these to the ordinance itself and the requirements. And right now, you'll see that in-law apartments have only been allowed by special permit in residential districts, prohibited in all business and industrial districts. And in this case, we're saying across the board, they would be allowed green light and and is still prohibited in those other districts. And then also there will be a footnote added to the table that if you don't meet the dimensional standards of section five twenty-four, they may be allowed by the issuance of a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'll just quickly highlight the Planning Board, you know, provided a draft to the council. The council referred it out for public hearing. Public hearing got delayed a little bit because of a a little bit of a mix-up at the Gloucester Daily Times. They failed to post the second notice. So we continued out another month and they held their hearing back in March. I think it was March. It's been a long spring. And so after the public hearing, the Planning Board made a recommendation to the council to amend the zoning ordinances as they were proposed. They did not really waver too much in terms of of some of the comments that were brought forward. I did kind of reiterate and highlight some of those comments that were presented to the board. I think some of them do clarify and and kind of make the ordinance a little bit more logical in it in its in its layout and also clarify a couple of points that were raised. So everything in this table that has a star next to it has been included in the draft that was forwarded to the council out of the Planning and Development Standing Committee on the nineteenth. Again, the definition was modified with with that language. There was a kind of more of a procedural requirement that was in in a section that was dealing with a with with standard. So that was moved. Again, some lettering and renumbering, reorganization. And then for clarity, there there are other forms of ownership not very common, but a cooperative form of ownership is something that does happen in the real estate market. And so there was a clarification that, making it very clear that if you create one of these units, it may not be in a separate ownership period. So, you know, kind of modifying condominium with cooperative as well. And then a little bit of nuance of what are we going to call, you know, a ADU that's attached or within the structure. And again, there are different ordinances that call them attached versus interior. And so there was kind of a wholesale changing from interior to attached because you can imagine that there's the possibility that somebody might put a slight addition onto the structure to accommodate the ADU, in which case it doesn't have to actually all fit with inside the existing structure. There is that limitation on size and that and that can be addressed with also some addition. There may be also the need for additions for egress to the unit. So again, to try to make it clear that it's it's attached or attached to the single family rather than entirely within the existing structure. And then there have been a couple of other points and and I'll also let it leave it to the public comment as well because I think I saw some folks that might want to comment on this as well. Just a few more points of of trying to kind of create a little bit more kind of synergy with the definitions in the building code versus in the ordinance. So adding, for instance, sleeping in that in that definition that has the things that really define a dwelling unit. And then where we're talking about dwelling unit versus the structure. But I can leave that to the public comment or circle back if counselors have questions. And so I think I've covered all of that and I'll leave it to your your P and D members or anybody else that has wants to correct anything that I've I've said in terms of characterizing the process, and I can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, so if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. And if you're watching on a device or a computer, there is a raise hand button to request to speak. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Address for the record, please.
Yes, Chris McCarthy, one sixty-six Bray Street in Gloucester. And I just want to speak in favor of this change. I was a little bit nervous at first, more I dug into it. I think this is really going to help a lot of families in Gloucester, a lot of, I talked to a lot of people who want to bring their parents, want to take over their parents' house, need extra room. And I think this is a really, this will be very, very helpful, I think, for keeping families in town. I think trying to look at some of the the language, trying to sort of match it to the building code, I think, as Greg had mentioned, just a few little, a few little items with regards to some of the definitions and some of the standards. I think if you look, if Greg can put up the chart there, I think in five point two, four point four with the standards, I think to make it clear to people that aren't very sophisticated like myself is to, I think that when you try to put a a single family, which is a dwelling inside a dwelling, I think it might confuse people. But looking through other towns and through the building code, I think if you call it a structure, it encompasses both units and an attached ADU. And I think it might just make it a little bit clearer. And there's a couple of places that in in five point two point four A and five point two point four two, I think if you change dwelling the structure, it would just make it clearer for the attached units. So that it's, you know, the, again, the structure can be two units, the 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 single family and the ADU. And I it it just makes it a little clearer, at least from from more from a building standpoint. And I think adding in the sleeping, if you match, looking through the actual International Building Code, it uses sleeping as well, a sleeping sanitation as well as as well as cooking. So I think that that's all. I think it's, I think it's going to be a good, a good, very helpful to a lot of people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Right. Teresa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Tracy Mark and my address is three oh nine Essex Ave.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the ADU ordinance. And I think it's just another tool that we need in the in the toolbox to help with attainable housing in Gloucester. And I I think too, like the like Chris said, that, you know, we have some seniors that are overhoused and could benefit from being able to make an extra apartment in in their house. And so I think that's really good. And it's my hope that maybe in conjunction with the other, the affordable, the inclusionary zoning ordinance, maybe there'll be some more money that will go towards the Affordable Housing Trust. And maybe we could actually help some people too that are stuck in this situation where they'd like to make some renovations and add a unit. But maybe we could have some creative thinking about that and and actually help some people so we could increase some of the units. And they could make the necessary renovations. So that's it. I hope you approve it. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate it. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? All right, press star nine if you're calling in and there's a raise hand button you can tap for. So we're just going to take everybody. If you would like to speak in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand and we'll allow you to talk. All right, Olympia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
Fifty seven Olympia Palazola, fifty seven Western Avenue, Gloucester, Mass.
Thank you.
I didn't hear the beginning of the conversation. I'm sorry, I just walked in, but I am totally in favor of this. We had an old two-story barn behind our house. And the city wanted us to take it down and we agreed to do it. And they approved from the Board of Appeals to put up a two-story garage. And everything was going fine until we finally got to the point where taking down the barn and putting in the foundation, we couldn't afford to build the building. The thing is, I almost wish that it was even more than what you're going for because my house happens to be a two-family right now. And I think this doesn't include a two-family. So it would be, it would be great to see that it could be that way. We were going to use it for our family and we went back to the Board of Appeals and we withdrew because of something they put into our our decision-making. We went back to put an apartment above. And little did we know that what the Board of Appeals had put in my agreement was that they, I could never put an apartment up there and my children could never live there. So and had you been at the the meeting that time when we did all this, what was interesting was that they were upset. The Board of Appeals was upset because somebody built a two-story garage to have an apartment above and they allowed it. And as soon as it was done, the guy sold the property. And they were mad at that and we took the brunt of it. So anything that you can do to raise more housing for, especially for me and stuff, the children and stuff that want to live on your property would be great. I still apparently will still would still have to go to the Board of Appeals to do this because I have a two-family and not a single family. So I'm I'm in favor of doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Press star nine to request to speak. Or there's a race, excuse me, raise hand button to request to speak also. All right, going once. Opposition or in favor going twice. All right, we will move right along. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, we have one communication from Ruth Pino of eighty-two Willistre in support of these amendments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any counselor questions? Counselor Gilman.
Hit my button, sorry. So I've got two questions to to Greg Catamatory. The first is very brief. I did have a constituent ask me about parking and I know parking is covered in this ordinance. Could you just summarize that to explain the parking situation?
Sure. So the parking can either be within the existing, if there's if there's adequate parking onsite already in the existing driveway, for instance. If there is a new driveway to be created, it should be, there's some parameters around the design of it and also that there there needs to be one space for the proposed AD unit. So there's also some screening requirements. This was interesting. It was also part of the public, you know, process. You know, that's, those are some of the the ways that in the development of this to try to mitigate for, I mean, it's it's very clear, this is, this is an additional use of of the property and a more intense use than than it is as as, you know, it stands right now. So there are some parameters that are in place to try to shield the parking from abutting uses as well as make sure that there is parking that that isn't essentially going to be kind of cluttering in the front of of the of the of the house. So again, if there's an existing driveway that has adequate off-street parking, it can be utilized. If it's going to be created, it has to be screened.
Thank you. And my second question is based on what Chris McCarthy said about replacing dwelling with structure. Are you okay with leaving it as it currently is as dwelling?
I I think those three proposed changes of just making it, you know, abundantly clear what the dwelling unit is by including the sleeping piece of it in the definition is 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 certainly just making it more specific as well as the distinction between dwelling and structure in those two areas. Again, and I I really do appreciate, you know, Chris really following this and and digging his hand, you know, kind of digging into this ordinance. You know, there is, there is the distinction between, you know, initially it was, well, how do I create something within within something with the kind of the interior? Because again, there can be some addition associated with this. There's a calculation of how big the unit can be. And then, you know, again, there could, there's going to potentially need to be some modification to the structure, whether it be vertical or horizontal to accommodate the use. So that moving from interior to detached, but then trying to make the distinction about when you're talking about the structure as a whole versus the the individual units, whether it be the single-family dwelling or the accessory dwelling. So in those two instances in that in that table that I put up, there are there are two instances where dwelling can be replaced with structure and then also the addition of of sleeping in in the activities associated with a dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Greg. Any other counselor questions? Counselor McCarthy.
Greg, the in-law apartments that currently exist, are they, will they automatically turn into ADU units?
Yeah, so they were actually, they had a smaller they or size limitation associated with them at six hundred square feet. So provided they complied, you know, they would certainly fall within the definition that that's been created for the accessory dwelling unit. They used to have a requirement and restriction for, um, having them be reserved to family members. Um, they would no longer have that restriction. Um, so I think they predominantly fall within this, the same kind of parameters. What we typically, or what, what, uh, the building commissioner typically does, um, is, is a change of use where somebody can come in and kind of clarify, you know, kind of show what they had permitted. And in this case, because it's, it's proposed as of right, um, it would just be the filing with the building department so that they would then no longer have to continue to, um, you know, they typically have to file an affidavit on an annual, on a basis that they're renting to a family member and that type of thing. Um, and they'd no longer be restricted to that.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, John. Any other counselor questions? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report, please.
Thank you, Counselor. On a motion by Counsel Holgram, seconded by Counsel Pat, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed. The Planning and Development Standing Committee voted to amend the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as recommended by the Planning Board to reflect the four changes discussed with the Planning Director and to recommend the City Council accept the proposed amendments to the Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section five point two four, accessory in-law apartments, as is included in the Planning Board memo dated March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to the City Council and attached hereto by incorporation and reference and I so move. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Holmgren. Any counselor discussion?
Counsel, I'd like to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion by inserting to include the revisions of May nineteenth, twenty-one, which will be attached hereto by incorporation in reference and deleting memo dated March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and I so move. Second.
All right. It's been made by motion, motion to amend's been made by Counselor Gilman, uh, seconded by Counselor Holmgren. So it's just, uh, belts and suspenders for this one, Counselor, for the dates.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I will call for the roll.
I just wanted to be, uh, certain, um, if you also wanted to incorporate the changes that were present, presented this evening, those last three, um, that would have to be included in your, in your motion if you're looking to adopt.
I wasn't sure that you had wanted, felt that we needed to do that based on what you said about the definition. So.
Oh, I, I, I think, I think those, I think those three that I kind of, I can put back up. Just want to make sure that we do this, do this once. Um, these, I think these are all, um, reasonable, you know, distinctions to make it very clear that when, when you're talking about structure and that, in the, in, in five twenty-four, four A and five twenty-four, uh, B two, you're talking about the collective structure. That's including both the, the single-family dwelling and the A D U. So that's a reasonable, um, replacement of dwelling for structure. And then with the addition of, um, sleeping, sleeping after, after cooking in the definition in section six, that those were, those were reasonable amendments, the ordinance to create more clarity.
Okay. So, um, with your permission, Mr. Chair, can I, um, withdraw my first amendment and try to do this all in one?
Well, we have a, we have a, a motion on the floor with a second, so we have to vote on, um, withdrawing this motion first. So if you want to make the, the formal motion to the motion, that's how it would have to go. Motion to withdraw your previous.
I move to withdraw my amendment on the motion. Second.
Right. Motion's been made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Holmgren to withdraw the previous amendment. All right. Uh, Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion to withdraw the amendment passes on a roll call vote with eight in favor, one absent. So back to the main motion, Counselor Gilman.
I'd like to amend the main motion by deleting memo dated March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and inserting to include the revisions of May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, which will be attached hereto by incorporation and reference and by inserting sleeping after cooking in six definitions and replacing dwelling and structure in sections five point two four point four A and five point two four point four B two. And I so move. Second.
All right. Now we're cooking. Motion's been, to amend has been made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Holmgren. Uh, is there any counselor discussion? Counselor Gilman.
I just want to say that I, I was really impressed that the Planning Board took into account the public comments and added them to their original document. And that's what we're doing right now in this amendment. So uh, power to the Planning Board and to Greg for being good listeners and taking that information to this next step. I'm very impressed.
I agree. All right. Counsel Holmgren, did you have a?
I'd just like to echo my agreement. Uh, it, it's, uh, really nice to see. So.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? All right. Seeing none. So on the amendment, uh, Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Uh, so back to the main motion with the amendments. Any other counselor discussion? Counsel Holmgren.
I'm so thrilled we're here. Uh, this is an absolute slam dunk. Uh, it's, it's something I've certainly been working toward, uh, along with all of you, uh, and with city administration, with, um, the, uh, Planning Board, uh, with all of the community activists and, uh, community stakeholders. I, I just, I cannot, uh, express my thanks enough. This is, um, this is going to make it a lot easier for our constituents to live their lives in, with quality, uh, and with dignity. And I, I can't support this enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Counsel Memhard.
I think just echoing what Jen said, but I'd like to go all the way back to Counselor Orlando and his initiative to get this going, uh, back when he served on the council.
I agree. Yeah. He, uh, put a lot of work into this back in the day. Um, any other counselor discussion? All right. Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right. Great job, Greg, in, uh, Planning and Development.
Don't worry, I'll be back. Have a good evening.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Um, all right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is Public Hearing twenty twenty-one dash two oh fifteen to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-one, Article five, West Gloucester firing range, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven. West Gloucester firing range by deleting the section and adding, adding Article five, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven reserved.
All right. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody that would like to speak in favor of this. If you are calling in, you can press star nine. And if you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button. So if anybody would like to speak in favor or in opposition, uh, please raise your hand now. I'm surprised we don't have, uh, some of the West Gloucester people on for, for this. All right. Um, once again, if you're calling in, there we go. All right. All right. Diane, can you hear me?
Uh, yes. Hi, yes, Steve. This is Grant Clark. I'm sorry. I'm just using your computer.
Name, name an address for the record, please.
Sure. Grant Clark, two seventy-nine Concord Street. Um, I, I won't, uh, rehash, uh, the extensive public debate and comment that, that we've all been part of over this. I, I just wanted to say on behalf of, uh, the Preserve West Gloucester Organization and the many, many people who got engaged on this that we, uh, appreciate and, uh, fully support the amendment to the ordinance that's being proposed. And, uh, we're delighted to have the land, uh, preserved for its, uh, intended purposes. And, uh, we are not fair-weather friends on this issue. We, uh, take very seriously the need of the Gloucester Police Department to find appropriate, uh, sites for its training and its certification and the community intends to be helpful and a part of that solution to the maximum extent we can. So we wanted to thank you and we're very supportive of the action you're taking on the range.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, Grant. We appreciate it. You know. All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Once again, press star nine if you're calling in or there's a raise hand button to request to speak. All right. Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
Do we have any counselor questions? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report, uh, which will be me. Ordinance and administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-one, Article five, West Gloucester firing range, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven, West Gloucester firing range by deleting Article five, West Gloucester firing range, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven, West Gloucester firing range in its entirety and adding Article five, Section twenty-one dash eighty-seven reserved and adding to never be used as a firing range or a shooting range again, and I so move.
Second.
All right. Motion made is by Counsel LeBlank, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Uh, any counselor discussion? Um, I just want to say a couple of things. I just want to reach out to everyone that came and, um, spoke, whether you were in favor or in opposition. Um, city government is lengthy. Uh, it's not where we can flip a switch and, um, take things back or make things happen. You have to go through due process and this went through due process. So we do appreciate, um, everything that happened, everybody that reached out, like I said, whether in favor or in opposition. And our, uh, fire, our police department and our chief, uh, chief of police, uh, Chief Conley, uh, for weathering this with us. And I'm sure that him being new in the past couple of years, never expected, um, we give him a fire range, we take a fire range, but, it takes a community to, uh, raise, raise it, raise a child. And this is what the community did. They came, they spoke and we listened. So it's our pleasure to take this back and make it right for everybody and enjoy the open space that we do have surrounding us. So, um, I'm going to support this completely. Um, thanks to Counsel Nolan for setting things up, Counsel Cox and Counsel O'Hara for attending the meetings to make sure we put this forward. Um, and like I said, it was a, it was a community project that a bunch of us had our hands in. And we do appreciate everybody that reached out. So I will be supporting this tonight and hopefully we don't have this problem ever again with this ordinance in there. All right. So that being said, I will call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counselor, uh, McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Um, and while I'm doing the thank yous, I want to reach out to Mayor Taken for her support on this and our general counsel, Chip Payson, for doing a lot of the legwork on this. So thank you to the administration also. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is Public Hearing twenty twenty-one dash two oh one six to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Article six, graphic schedule, Section twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by adding Grove Street, Westerly Side at a point twenty feet from its intersection with Washington Street in a northerly direction for a distance of twenty-two feet.
All right. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody that would like to speak in favor. All right. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to be recognized to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button. All right. Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
Do we have any counselor questions? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Uh, ordinance administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Article six, graphic schedules, Section twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by adding Grove Street, Westerly Side, beginning at a point of twenty feet from its intersection with Washington Street and in a northerly dis, direction for a distance of twenty-two feet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel LeBlank, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Um, counselor discussion? I will spearhead this because this was my order. Um, the owners of Carl's Cones, that's on the corner of Washington Street and Grove Street, had reached out to me a couple of months ago and asked for a fifteen-minute parking sign. Uh, we previously put one on Washington Street and we're adding one on Grove Street. Um, they do have a takeout window. So I met with the owners. I let them know that this is just a typical sign, just like everyone else, like a handicap sign. This is not strictly for your business. Um, the people at the convenience store across the street, the people over at the coffee shop or any other surrounding businesses, they also use this parking spot. Uh, they completely understood. They were happy to get a fifteen-minute parking spot in there. Um, it coincides with the fifteen, with the twenty feet to the curb. Um, so that'll be one parking spot um, from the curb, from the intersection. Um, and they completely understood everything. And I think it's good to have the stare to reach out for the businesses, look out for the businesses in the neighborhood. And it's, uh, we have these all over the city. So it's just standing operated procedure for the business to ask for a fifteen-minute parking, um, sign. All right. Any other counselor discussion? All right. Seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order of business is Public Hearing twenty twenty-one, there's, uh, seventeen, and then Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Section twenty-two dash two seventy point one, residents taking parking only six AM through six PM, May first to September fifteenth, and Section twenty-two dash two ninety-one, towaway zones, forgotten streets and roadways throughout the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody that would like to speak in favor. Uh, Counsel Pat?
Yes, I would like to, um, just say that I am in support of this for the sanity of all of our residents. Uh, however, I would, uh, uh, ask that when the time is appropriate, uh, I would ask that you, uh, I would like to make an amendment, a, a motion for an amendment. So when we get to that point, if you would, uh, recognize me, I'd appreciate it.
We will. Um, okay. Well, I don't think we've ever had a counselor step forward to, to start speaking, but, um, we'll get, we'll get to you, Barry. So, so there's, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? we'll get, we'll get to you, Barry. So there's, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or opposition? If you are calling in, you can press star nine. And if you are watching on a computer or a device, there's a raise hand button to be recognized to speak. Kevin, can you hear me? Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
Eleven Vulcan Street.
All right, can we have your name and I, name and address for the record?
Kevin Hutchinson, eleven Vulcan Street.
Go ahead.
I just like to thank Val for all the work she's done on this and all the time she's taken out of her very busy schedule to do some investigative reporting. And, and the, and the police as well, the police have shown tremendous respect to both sides that are in on this issue, those that are come parking and those of us that live here. I've lived here for eighteen years at Vulcan Street, and I've seen a lot of changes. And parking last year was worse than I've ever seen it. It's gotten worse every year. I think what's being asked for is signs that are consistent with some other signs that are already up on a number of streets, including part of High Street. So I very much like to speak in favor of this and thank those people who've been involved.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you speaking this evening. All right, is there anybody like else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Press star nine if you're calling in, when there's a raised, there's a raise hand button, you can tap to request to speak. All right, going once, going twice. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
All right, do we have any councilor questions? Counselor Gilman?
I have a question for Chief Conley. And I so much thank him for being on this call.
We have the chief. Chief Conley, can you hear us?
I can. Stand by one minute.
Oh, we lost you for a second. Are you there? All right, we'll give him a second.
He just asked me to stand my woman.
Hi, Chief.
Counselor.
Thanks for saying on. So I have a question that came up today, and I think it's a simple question to have answered. And I just would like to hear from the chief. Counsel LeBlanc, you had kind of brought this up before, too. It's regarding what would happen when there are contractors on one of these residence-only parking streets. And specifically, a landscaping truck was the example. This particular constituent lives on Colburn Street, and her landscaping company comes on her street, they park at the end, and they unload one of the lawn mowers that people drive around on. And then they leave that trailer and the truck on the street, which is identified as residence-only. So I wanted to ask Chief Conley for the, for my constituent, if he could answer that in terms of how the police would deal with that when a contractor, commercial business, is in a position like that.
Certainly, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I mean, there's really kind of two ways that we can address this. One would be to write some additional language into the ordinance, which I actually wouldn't recommend that we do that and complicate. You can make a whole laundry list of exceptions to the rule that can complicate things for people trying to understand what the ordinances say. So, you know, we spend a lot of time training our personnel to exercise discretion when it comes to enforcement of, of certain regulations and laws. And we've all experienced driving down busy streets where deliveries are being made by UPS drivers or FedEx drivers or any number of vendors to businesses that are typically brief. And they're along the way. We can't possibly write, you know, ordinances that cover every, every time that happens. So we, we train our people to use discretion. And if a landscape company is there and they're there momentarily, they're not, you know, blocking the road in a way to create a public safety hazard, we, we wouldn't give them a citation for parking there to do their job. And if there was an issue, typically, my staff would go up and make contact with the vehicle owners and just try to ascertain either how long they're going to be there or whether or not they might be able to move to a better location to open up the roadway. So this stuff we, we deal with every single day.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief. Counsel Pat?
Yeah, my question also would be to Chief Conley at this point, and it may therefore relate to how I might make an amendment. And in the list of the streets here, we have Western Avenue, and we have Essex Avenue. And Western Avenue to the west of the Blunden Bridge. And Essex Avenue in its entirety are in the control of the state, not the city. And my question is, if we put this ordinance through and we have, we put up signs that we're not author, we don't control that parking area, how do you enforce, how do you issue a ticket for something versus us, you know, until we can do either get a, a written agreement with Mass DOT or something to put these signs up? If we just do this ordinance and we do not have that permission, and from my understanding and talking to our council today and the DPW director, there is no, no agreement from the state to, you know, yield that control. So how do you enforce these types of regulations if we were to pass this this way?
Just simply said, Counsel, if we pass this, if you pass this and we put up the signage and people buy it, we will write tickets, and then it's ultimately up to the legal process to decide who has jurisdiction over that, that property. I think this might be a better question for the city attorney than would be for, for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any other councilor questions? All right, I do, I do wish we had Chip on the call this evening, because I got a couple of questions. Because I kind of agree with Barry on this with the Essex Avenue and then also Western Avenue from Windsor Lane to Huff Ave, where there's a lot of people that live on the other side of the street that park on the baseball field side of the street to try to clarify that. Counsel Pat?
Yeah, just to echo what you're talking about here, Steve. I did talk with Counselor Payson this afternoon specifically about this and also to the DPW Director, Mike Hale. And they both confirmed that that the control of this at this point is under the state, you know, DOT and not the city. And we may even have, you know, some other signs that are up now, et cetera. And I, I didn't know if it was appropriate to ask the chief or, or what, but both, both Counsel Payson and DPW Director suggested that we, you know, would attempt to get something in writing that would authorize us from the state to move forward. But that's just for, you know, clarification as to what my discussion was. Obviously, it's, we're not hearing from either one of them on the call this evening.
All right, thank you, Barry. Any other councilor questions? Counselor Gilman?
So it might behoove us to amend this to, to remove those two streets so we can move forward with the rest, because...
Counsel Gilman, before we, we can discuss that when we do the, the emotion for us. But yeah, I, I completely, we haven't made the motion yet. Yeah, we're still on council questions.
Okay.
That's all. I just don't want to get in the weeds. That's all. Any other council questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Ordinance Administration would like to recommend that the city, voted unanimously to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Section twenty-two dash two-seventy-point-one, residence sticker parking only, six AM through six PM, from May first to September fifteenth, in Section twenty-one dash two-ninety-one, towaway zones, by amending to include the following streets. I I will read them just to make sure we get everything right. We have Marina Drive, we have Brightside Ave, we have Edgemore Road, Farrington Avenue, from St. Louis Avenue to Atlantic Road, St. Louis Avenue, Cabo Drive, Loma Drive, Puerto Drive, Rio Drive, Hart Street, Toman Street, Williams Court, Harrison Avenue, Eastern Ave, Esterly Side from, from the numbers seventy-two through eighty-four, Hart Street to Abbott Road, Elizabeth Road, Abbott Road, Traverse Street, Stage Four Avenue, Beachmont Avenue, Toman Avenue, Crowell Avenue, Old Salem Road, Huff Ave, Windsor Lane, Western Avenue from Windsor Lane to Huff Ave, Bond Street, Essex Avenue from Western Avenue to Bond Street, Andrews Street, Dooley Street, Vulcan Street, High Street, Cross Street, Mandela Square, Saywood Street, Decatur Street, Middle Street from Western Avenue to Washington Street, East Main Street from Eastern Avenue to Route one-twenty-eight Traffic Lights, Eastern Point Road from Breakline Road to Isles Beach, Bass Avenue from Brightside Avenue for a distance of five hundred feet across from Seven-Eleven Store, Moreland Road, Haskell Street, Colburn Street, Dornell, Dornell Road, Hodgkin Cove Parking Area, next to the entrance of UMass Marine Station off Washington Street, and ISO move.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Counsel LeBlanc, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Counsel, the discussion. Counsel Gilman?
Counsel, you left off Quarry Street.
And I'll amend it. I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to include Quarry Street.
Second.
All right, discussion. Roll call. Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion to amend and add Quarry Street passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. So back to the main motion with the amendment. Counsel Pat?
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment.
Go ahead.
I would like to move that we temporarily pull Essex Avenue and Western Avenue out of this motion until, and if we can get a written agreement with Mass DOT for us to be able to post and enforce these restrictions, and ISO move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counsel Pat, seconded by Counsel Holmgren. I don't know how we can temporarily remove a item from the, it would either have to be removed and we would make a new order to put it back on, or we could continue this, which we don't want to do because time over the essence. So best bet is probably to make a motion to remove things, but hold on.
So I'm more, again, I'm not, it was just a discussion that I had earlier with, with Counsel Payson, and I'm happy to amend the motion. I don't want to stop the process tonight. So whatever you would like, I'm happy to amend the motion to remove it for this time being. And then we, I guess we could come back and add it in, add another date.
So we do have a motion on the floor to amend, and we're in discussion. So Counsel McCarthy?
Yes, the, the Western Ave, I mean, we have signage all through there. It's one-hour parking. It's been there for years. It's been enforced for years. My, my thinking is, you know, we're going to be timeframe, we're going to be in the same boat we were last year with problems. I don't see any reason we can't pass the ordinance. And if we, if the city legal says we need an agreement, pursue the agreement before we put up the signs. And if for some reason we can't get an agreement, then we can, we can remove the ordinance then.
Right.
But that's, that's an area that's been ticketed. It's one-hour parking, and it, it's, it's been enforced for years, all on by the ballfield.
Yep, there's that, and there's also by the World War II Memorial. There's a number of things that are in place and have been enforced. I'm just, I'm just, the only reason I bring it up is I just don't want us to continue doing things without somehow, at the end of the day, trying to get an agreement with the state to do this totally correct.
So Counsel Pat, I agree with Counsel McCarthy. If you withdraw your amendment, we can move it forward as is. And then if we need to tweak something down the road, we'll tweak it.
Okay, happy, happy to withdraw.
All right, you want to?
Second.
You want to make it in a formal motion?
I, I make a motion to withdraw my amendment to temporarily exclude Essex Avenue and Western Avenue from this ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion to withdraw from Counsel Pat has been seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Any other discussion? Counsel Gilman?
Yeah, I, I want to, I want this to be completed, but I just wanted to, after that, I wanted to ask us to suspend our process for a public hearing and allow my constituent Sally Arnold to speak, because she missed the public hearing because it just went by so fast, and she would really like to speak. So, but, but let's, let's deal with this. And then I'll ask you to consider my rec, my request to suspend the rules of the public hearing and allow her to speak.
Okay, so we got a couple of moving parts here. We've got a to withdraw right now. So, and it's been seconded, so let's, let's get through this part first. So, motion's been made to withdraw from Counsel Pat, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes to a withdraw on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. And now Counselor Gilman has asked us to suspend our rules so we can allow someone to speak from the public. I don't have a problem with that, but we have to take a vote on it because we are past the public hearing part of it. So, Counsel Gilman, you want to make that in a formal motion?
Yes, I, I request that we suspend the rules of procedure for public hearing in order to allow my constituent Sally Arnold to speak.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded. Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat? Yes. Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, our rules are suspended, and we'll go right back to where we left off after we allowed Sally to talk. Sally, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Sally Arnold, North Spinaut, in Lanesville. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
I just, I, I think it's great what you're doing. I just want to bring up the Lanes Cove situation, the parking down there. So my husband and this, I think, four others who run their lobster boats out of Lanes Cove, and they, they're having a lot of trouble trying to get bait on and off their boats, trying to get their ketchup, their boats, because there's no parking. Because they're such a deluge of out, out-of-towners, and they're, you know, the, the streets are closed, so they're all ending up down the coves. And it's a real problem for people trying to make a living out of there.
Okay, anything else, Sally?
Um, I think that says it all, I hope.
All right, awesome. Thank you. All right. All right, so back to, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. So is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I will offer the roll call. Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, and I'd also like to recognize the mayor's office and Bob Ryan for their assistance moving this ahead. Thank you.
Make a shot, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes, I would also like to add that there, we do have the power to do an emergency order on this and to waive the thirty days. So I, I think that, I mean, we're talking June twenty-fifth before this goes in. So, um, I, I think that, I mean, we're talking June twenty-fifth before this goes in. So, um, I'm not usually in favor and I've only used it once in ten years, but I think this is a perfect situation where that would need to be done.
Okay, we can, um, you can make a formal motion after with more discussion. Um, Counsel Gilman?
Yes, thank you.
Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent, and, uh, Counsel Cox?
I would need a refresher from Joanne on the ins and outs of this. Um, I think we did this back when we put the parking meter at I four C nothing and, um, we ended up having to do an emergency order.
Okay, so according to the charter, you would have to, um, do a preamble, um, saying that it, you know, to the health and safety of the citizens of the city of Gloucester, and you would have to do that. I would have to just go to the charter and get the correct language.
Just move it, Melissa. Whatever Joanne said, just move it.
Um, it has, it actually is very specific language. Um, I mean, I, I'm certainly willing to wing it. Um, for this, for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Gloucester, I move that we en- enact an emergency order for the, um, parking restrictions that were just discussed in public hearing twenty twenty-one seventeen. And I so move.
Second.
All right, good job.
If Joanne wants to do the language or if she, is that good enough, Jo? I think she's researching.
Okay, I'm on the city charter. I'm almost there. So if you want to give me a second?
Okay.
H three thousand four hundred twenty-two point six A sub B one two.
Sounds good, Barry. That institutional knowledge of yours, thank God.
It's only forty-one pages long, Barry. In your mind, John.
Emergency order.
All right, so, uh,
Okay, so it's under section two eleven, it's under two eleven. Under two eleven A.
All right, so under section two eleven A.
Hold on, Counselor. We already have a motion. And a second.
Clarifying.
Yeah. Um, you want to amend it to include two eleven A? Section two eleven A might be the cleanest way to do it.
Yes.
All right, you want to make that in a form of a motion to include it? The man, we're going to amend your original motion to include section two eleven A into your motion.
All right, I move that we amend previous motion to include section two eleven A.
Second.
All right, we're moving seconded. So on the amendment, everybody understand? Which is, uh, Counsel Gilman, we're in council discussion, so go ahead.
Can I, can I just, um, discussion? Um, I support this amendment and specifically reads, no measure shall be adopted on the date it is introduced except in the case of special emergency involving the piece health or the safety of the people or their property. So I think that that perfectly fits this request. So I think it's, I think it's a good, it's a good amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, so Counselor Cox's, um, main motion and the amendment covers it, and Counsel Gilman just gave a brief overview of the definition, so we appreciate that being on the record. Um, so on the amendment on Counsel Cox, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll call. Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
My motion to amend passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, so back to the main motion with the amendments. All right, everybody understand where we're at? So this is emergency, emergency enactment, which, uh, I appreciate Counsel Cox bringing this forward because, um, the time restraints are very narrow and it's going to be eighty degrees tomorrow and who knows what's going to end up happening over the next weekend. Um, you know, people flock to Gloucester the minute it gets to seventy, eighty degrees. So I appreciate uh, moving this forward and I will support this this evening. Um, any other council or discussion? Seeing none, um, main motion with the amendments, Counsel LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel, uh, Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, uh, on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Counsel Cox?
Motion to reconsider.
There you go.
Second.
All right, everybody understand? Melissa, it's a no, right? All right, Counsel LeBlank, no. Counsel McCarthy?
No.
Counsel Memhard?
No.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Counsel Pat?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
And Counsel Holmgren?
No, I sure did miss your protracted nose, Scott. This is great. Thank you.
Motion to reconsider sales on a roll call vote of zero in favor, eight opposed, one absent. Thank you, Counselor. And you know what? It's nice to have a good chuckle every once in a while. We appreciate that. All right, um, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the special speed regulation number seven nine six five from the Mass DOT regarding Leonard Street.
All right, um, Counsel Gilman? You want us to touch this off, see unless, um, this is any more?
Thank you.
I'll, I'll read the motion first and, and then we'll, we'll get to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, um, let's see here. All right, let me get to it. Um, City Council would like to adopt, uh, pursuant to mass general law, chapter ninety, section eighteen, special speed regulations, number seven nine six five, to impose the following speed limits in which motor vehicles may operate on Leonard Street as follows. Leonard Street northbound, beginning at the, the junction, uh, junction of Cambridge Avenue, Route one twenty-seven A, uh, fence northly on Leonard Street at zero point eight nine miles at twenty miles per hour, ending at the junction of Route one twenty-seven, Washington Street, the total distance being zero point eight nine miles. Leonard Street southbound, beginning at the junction of Route one twenty-seven, Washington Street. Um, there in southern, southerly on Leonard Street, zero point eight nine miles at twenty miles per hour, ending at the junction of Cambridge Avenue. The total distance begin being zero point eight nine miles and I so move.
Second.
All right, Counsel Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. So this is a very important speed limit change because I think everyone knows when there are no official speed limits, it defaults to thirty miles an hour. And that is how Leonard Street has been classified. And this twenty mile an hour zone is reasonable. It's consistent with the speed studies that came out, and I appreciated, um, Ed Conley, our police chief, writing a letter of support um, to the Mass DOT on this because I think it really speaks for itself. Um, Anna Squam is a very much a pedestrian walking, um, village. There are no sidewalks. And there are just tons of bike riders and baby carriages and all kinds of folks walking all the time. And speeding trucks and cars is just a big problem. So this will be very much appreciated if we vote in favor of this, and I appreciate that the state weighed in. And then this is just the last part of the puzzle, which I'm sure you can explain more, Counsel LeBlank. So, um, so thank you for everyone's efforts on this as well as the residents of Anna Squam who worked really hard to get this. So thank you.
Thank you, Val. Any other council or discussion? All right, seeing none. Um, I think this makes sense also. We have, like Counsel Gilman said, if it's not posted, it's thirty miles an hour. You know, thirty miles an hour is quite a kick for a, a very small, narrow streets that we have in, in the city. Um, it's amazing what people will do. I had a speed study on Maplewood Avenue a couple of years ago and from Cleveland Street to Gloucester Avenue, somebody was clocked at doing seventy-six miles an hour. And I had a speed study done on the upper end of Gloucester Avenue a couple of months ago. And we had somebody going fifty-five miles an hour going up Gloucester Avenue toward Bongo with no sidewalks. Um, so it'd be nice to have this marked as twenty miles an hour um, for the residents of Ward Four and the, and the residents on Leonard Street. So, um, any other council or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Counsel LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, thank you.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes, thank you, Val.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. The Counsel Gilman. Um, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is, um, request to the mayor.
Right, um, we'll start off with, uh, Counselor, let's see here, who are we going to pick on tonight? We'll go Counsel Pat for us.
Okay, um, I would like to ask, um, the administration um, um, to have, um, some discussions with Mass DOT. Uh, number one about the, uh, ordinance that we just passed, uh, about parking restrictions, uh, but also um, asked through our, um, uh, state delegation, Representative Ferrante and Senator Tar, that, um, that we request that Mass DOT uh, do a complete study of the Kent Circle area, uh, to include, um, you know, Western Avenue, uh, Essex Avenue, um, Kent Circle, the road itself, um, and, uh, the parking in that area, um, directions, turn lanes, et cetera. Um, uh, Senator Tar seemed, uh, to indicate that if we put a request in through, uh, our legislators, that hopefully we can get a study that might resolve some of the issues that have, um, been ongoing in that area, uh, for a long time, you know, uh, whether it be traffic based backed up on the, uh, uh, from the bridge in the summertime or parking regulations or turn, turning and, uh, those types of things. So I would like to ask the mayor, um, if the administration would, uh, uh, through our state delegation to ask the, uh, Mass DOT to address that. And I'd also like to, uh, just take a minute to congratulate Grandpa LeBlank, uh, uh, here this evening. And also to, uh, welcome back, uh, and see a, uh, smiling face, um, for Counsel Memhard. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Um, all right, up next we have, uh, we'll go to Counsel McCarthy.
Um, I have nothing for the mayor, but I too, uh, congratulate Steve on becoming a grandfather and it's really, really great to see Scott back with us.
All right, uh, Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I just mimic what, um, pertained to the Council Memhard. Welcome back. Um, on behalf of, um, Counsel Nolan and the Magnolia residents and all the citizens of Gloucester that use the Magnolia Pier, um, like to have some what the plan is for getting a raft and ramped in at the newly constructed Magnolia Pier. Also, um, I've received numerous calls from businesses off of Spurs of Webster Street and, um, with the new YMCA and Halyard opening up that we initiate a traffic study to figure out what's going on. Businesses on, off of the Spurs of Webster Street are very concerned. They have, um, fifty-three foot trailers making deliveries. They have problems already and they're concerned. So I'd like to ask that to be happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, uh, Counsel Memhard?
I'd just like to say thank you for your, uh, warm welcome back and thank you also for all of you who helped cover, uh, while I was, uh, out of, out of service and, uh, made, made sure that my constituents here on Ward One were, uh, having their, their needs addressed. And I thank you all. It's a pleasure to be back with you.
Thank you, Scott. Good to see you. Uh, Counsel Holmgren?
Uh, echoing what's been said, uh, welcome back, Scott. So glad to have you back and, uh, although you were certainly with us for a while, uh, remotely. So that's great. Uh, and congratulations, Steve. This is just, um, terrific all around. Um, yay. I do, I do want to just say one thing. Um, uh, I'll just, I'll read this quickly. Uh, the Essex Board of Health shared this uh, on their Facebook page and I've seen it circulating around. If you see someone masked after the CDC removed masking requirements for fully vaccinated people, please remember people may have cancer, people may have autoimmune diseases, people may have unvaccinated children at home. People may have high-risk loved ones. They are protecting. People may have asthma and have realized over the last year that their symptoms are alleviated by a mask outdoors or people may be unvaccinated. So this is the new, new normal. Uh, if you see somebody with a mask, I, I'm sure there's a reason. You'll, you'll certainly see me with one for a while. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Makes perfectly sense. Um, Counselor, uh, Cox?
Um, there's a spot in front of Carol still where they removed a parking spot, um, and the white lines are showing um, from when they blacked it out. So it would be nice to have that repainted. Um, so the white lines are not showing anymore. Uh, there's been a lot of people parking there and it gets really tight in that area. That is it.
Thank you, Melissa. Counsel Gilman?
I've got three things. I'll be quick. Um, first is the benefit of institutional knowledge and Counsel LeBlank and Counsel Cox. Um, knowing that you both are not going to be running again, it's really important that, um, that you keep sharing with us the institutional knowledge and bringing up the emergency order was something that was new to me because I've never done that in my years on the council. And it's, and it's really helpful. So keep up this process because you have seven more months and, um,
Seven?
Oh, is it seven?
God, I hope not.
Well, I mean, six, I, I think it might be seven, sorry.
All right, yeah, seven.
But anyway, I just wanted to, to comment on that. Um, second, I, I'm eager to find out from the mayor, um, and Chief Conley, and it doesn't have to be right now. But, um, our, our new parking fines are now effective, I believe, because we voted on them about a month, thirty-one days ago. So I'm eager to know that the ticket cards have come in and we will be fining for those new rates, um, immediately. So it does, like I said, it doesn't have, have to be answered right now, but I just want, I'm, I'm eager to know that, that that has occurred. Um, and then my third thing is, um, I think five of you were on the P and D call last week and, um, the, the P and D meeting. And we discussed briefly at the meeting that our current application for special counsel permit um, probably could be amended. And, um, so I asked both Gray Katamatory and, um, Bill Sandborn to weigh in. And they both felt comfortable that our and they both felt comfortable that our clerk's office with, and, and I just asked permission through the chair, our clerk's office could easily amend the current special counsel permit just by adding a little section on that says, "If the applicant is applying for height special counsel permit under 3.1.6B, please skip this section." And that's all. And it's really, that was Bill Sanborn's idea. I thought it was brilliant because there's no need for people that are applying for 3.6 point, 3.1.6B needs to fill out the standards to be applied because that's only for use tables. So, I think that's a perfect solution and with, with the permission of Counsel LeBlanc, I just thought that it would be something that the clerk's office could do and therefore applicants wouldn't be filling out information that is not necessary and sometimes confusing to the public. So. Counsel LeBlanc, obviously, if you can check with Bill if you want and, and Greg, but I just think it's, it's a, it's a brilliantly simple thing to do.
Okay, thank you. And Joanne, can I ask you a question also?
Sure.
Attorney Favaz had reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and asked about the special counsel permits. Can you give us a definition on that so we know what we're moving forward?
Okay, so I was on that email and also Krisna was on General Assistant General Counsel. She reviewed it and she, you know, she approved, we made the amendment to the special city council permit. We sent it to her and she approved it that, you know, it could be changed. The other thing I think she said is also in the rules of Section 25 in the Gloucester zoning ordinance. I think it says special permit and I think it's under the council rules of procedure also. So we would have to change that all. And I was just waiting for any other direction because I was on the emails about Counsel Gilman wanted to change about Section 3.1.6B.
Okay, so can we send our general counsel an email as where we are at? So, so Attorney Favaz had reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and said that there's no such language as a counsel permit, and it's only referred to as a counsel permit. So.
Special permit, I'm sorry. It's, it's referred as a special permit and not a special counsel permit.
So we're looking at the language to change that and then Joanne, send a a memo to counsel to look at the language and inserting what Counsel Gilman has asked for this evening also. Okay, and we'll follow up with you tomorrow about it. Okay.
And, and congratulations, Steve and Scott.
Thank you. As, I don't know if you guys noticed, a few minutes ago, I smiled like crazy. My wife had just come in from visiting with the baby and I'm like, I don't know. I'm over the moon right now, so I'm, I'm so looking forward to going up and seeing you. But everything worked out good. He was seven pounds, 15 ounces. I don't have any counselor requests to the mayor. I just want to thank the administration. I want to thank our health department. Great job. City council, great job to our acting CAO Frank and our assistant to the CEO Chris for updating us, the council, every single day. We appreciate that. And Melissa, it's 220 days, not seven months.
220 days for you.
220 days. Oh, I know. Right, you're going on vacation. All right, so if there's nothing, if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Give it to Scott. Roll call vote. Everybody say aye.
It's been moved by everyone. It's second. It's been moved by Scott, seconded by whoever, you could pick somebody.
Scott, and it'll be approved by Scott.
All right, so I'll call for the roll. Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, thank you all.
Welcome back. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pet?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
And Counsel Holmbrun?
Yes, have a good night, everybody.
Good job, everyone. Good night.
Good night, thank you.